And more likely.
Even the homeowners on the lake were gonna do from the edge of their water lake. I guess I'm just not reading this.
Did you ask me, don't you know about total or total?
I've got the corrected one, I've got the same thing and it hasn't changed since, but we can see where the the highlighted area there was and is in there that the edge of the following are half mile from the edge of the following identified lakes is measured by their water mark. In the township, most of it, Cawdon, Cody, Rocky, Barnum, Finkney, Black, Cranberry, Spruce, Long, War, Mosquito, Woodfield Lakes, that must all part of the owners on said lakes. Way with this setback or Florida.
Which you not, no, they're not gonna because they're so, they're the little bit of lake that don't, no, so that's the way we know the setback.
Depends on if the property owner owns the lake along with enough property to have one.
Alright, then I guess that will be.
I don't know if that helps any.
Well, and, but you know, I'm just like I said, going through this, which is an unbiased report, you know, and it tells you that they recommend, they're not telling you guys, they recommend that property line boost and then a setback with two times. The tip height.
Okay, well, everybody being agreeing that, do we wanna change it or do we wanna leave it the way it is? Do you wanna change it to the back or the property line instead of the lake's edge?
Change it, strike that lake, that water mark.
Alright, so we've got a motion on this from property lines.
To the water, that's the property. Water mark.
Instead of high amount of water mark.
I don't understand why you do that.
Okay, so, we've got a motion to amend. That would be D of
Section, section four.
Section four, C and D.
C and D. Actually, we're gonna, we're gonna take out C because we got the three times already and I don't think we're gonna use it to go anywhere. So we've got a motion to amend from property line instead of the high water mark of the lake. Is there any want to?
I wanna say so. If we're gonna take away the high water part as the edge, you're gonna go over a half mile from then I believe they should, they should compromise and break it down to two times tip height.
For what?
For the seven, two times.
Let's go one, let's do one in the time, because it says two different things.
Alright.
So we've got a motion to amend the section eight or section four, part B, changes from saying property line to lake setback, amend from property instead of the high water mark of the lake. Is there a second amendment?
Do you need a motion? Dennis, did you say something? Did you second it? I just did, I, okay.
All favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Okay, so now you wanted to change the tip height back to two times instead of three five times.
Because we've given them more, given the lake people more lake edge, over here property. Now, it's lake edge, it's three times. Now, we're coming up to their property line. I feel a fair compromise would be to do it two times the tip height instead of three.
It's actually the half mile.
What's a half mile?
From a lake setback. The lake setback, we just changed from the edge of the water, high water mark to the lake, to the property line. And that's the half mile. Half miles.
Half a mile.
From the lake.
Fifteen hundred feet.
A half a mile, that's.
From the property line, that's a half mile.
You're looking at, uh, eight. Twenty-one, twenty-one.
Yards or feet?
Wait, because your math.
Yeah, so you're gonna have twenty-six hundred and some feet for the half mile.
Yep. So the mile was three thousand something.
Sixteen hundred and forty, sixteen hundred forty yards, so times that by three. Uh, you know, that's it, I mean, you're, you're not basically second it from two times the tip height from that property line. They've got that half mile around that lake that we've already given.
Alright.
So, yeah. That was.
I know we're saying that we're giving to you, we're trying to make a compromise here because I've heard you people say several times you wanted it at the property line, not at the lake. So I'm trying to make the compromise to push that off the lake.
Yeah, why rebate it? It was already done the last month.
It wasn't done last month.
The property line lost it.
We got it right here in our notes, Roger.
You're gonna change this part on the lake setback, that was still at the high water mark.
Right, it might have been from the property edge to your three times height, but it wasn't ever from the mileage from the lake. That was always to the high water line. Alright, so now you got, uh, the change from five hundred to no more, to six hundred feet, that's the one according to, right? And that's section six.
Um, it's just a thought because what I'm hearing is turbine is anywhere between five and six hundred feet. So, why not put a average in there, I guess, no, to no more than
Well, we kind of.
May not exceed five hundred feet, but after you less than six hundred. We say you gotta have your turbine five hundred feet.
Right.
Company comes back in, turbine, period.
Tip height, no, it's not, it's not, turbines aren't gonna be five hundred feet, it's still heights.
Whatever the height says may not exceed five hundred feet in height. Okay, turbine is five hundred feet in height, including the tip. If the company that wants to build it comes in and says, well, our turbine with the tip height is five hundred thirty.
Can't come.
No, I see what she's saying, she's saying cut it off.
So give it, yeah, give it in.
She's saying completely cut it off.
May not exceed five hundred.
May not exceed five hundred. Higher than five hundred or less than six hundred. It's gotta be less than six hundred, but it has to be higher than five, so.
No.
I would say let's just leave it at the maximum of five hundred.
Five hundred, alright.
I, I.
Sam say.
For quite a while and we want to.
This is Sam, he comes in. Variants to get a request, should we go at highest?
No.
That's no can be a variant, we had to go through the CBA's and I don't think that would ever happen.
Oh, okay.
They still gotta follow orders.
Okay, alright. Um, number three is on noise, we have to check that, that.
Yep.
Number four is ten on the roads, or not page ten, section eleven roads. Alright. MSU, um, as far as the road restoration, the MSU guide says that we should defer to the county road commission to enter into a separate road use agreement with the developer because public roads in Michigan are under the jurisdiction of MDOT or the county road commission. So rather than, um, us, from what I understand, rather than us trying to go after them to fix the roads properly, that should be something that county or state was having.
That is well known. Said that's well known.
They already, yes, under section two, under the application stuff, they already have to submit something to the road.
To the road commission. And this is just stating that material damages to public roads located within the townships resulting from construction, maintenance, operation, or de-commissioning of the wind energy facility, including all of its components shall be repaired at the applicant's expense.
But if they come in and put in some shiny piece of road.
No, it's not, they actually.
They have to do it by the road.
And it's in the application process.
They actually pay the road commission to do it.
Okay, alright.
So that's on.
And that's why they've been out, as far as I know, if I get wrong, I've done before, but as far as I know, they're already mapping roads out on county for any damages so that if something does arise out of this, that their, the road commission already knows the shape of our roads. If they damage us, we know what's going on. So that's already, I know that the road commission, that's needed done at the county level instead of the township level.
Okay, you repeat that, Roger.
The road commission is out mapping roads to find out the condition. Say you've got a bad tile on the road someplace, they run over, it's already bad tile, they're gonna replace it. But it's the county that all this road damage caught back on because it's the county road that is taking care of our roads.
They're mapping them now?
Yeah, as far as I know, they aren't, they're getting any kind of damage, that's what I heard, I, you know? Like I said, I've been talking before, wherever, I think it was Mark Kirsten, Mark Kirsten said would be able to.
They're all the other responses.
Right, right, that's.
And they're mapping it, they're trying to.
Well, and that's, I guess, it's no different than them going out and looking at the roads to see well, what repairs they've gotta do on them already, you know?
They're trying to be proactive. I mean, if there's road damage that should have been fixed in the first place by the county and the wind developer comes along and crushes it, well, that's not the wind developer's fault. The county should have had that open.
Correct.
They need to know what. We don't know that, but there's no reason why they can't map out where things need to be.
They need to know what the condition.
And it's not just for the wind.
Yeah, we shouldn't even be at lovely to make right now anyways, let's get back to the.
Okay.
The order, all right.
I know this seems like a lot of nitpicking and I probably sound like I'm stupid, but these are things I have thought about and trying to get figured out.
Listen, then you took the tier five and go.
Okay. The next one, same page, other liability insurance. We had changed that to twenty twenty-two. Should it say equivalent to current year dollars? And then, I also believe that we should have a copy of the insurance with pay that provided to the board and your, well, township annual so that we can make sure we're on top of the fact that anybody can say they paid their insurance, we can find out later what.
To be adjusted annually to a amount equivalent to, and that's worth two thousand, twenty-two dollars based on the CBI.
But if we don't do, if it's settled in twenty twenty-two with Shire man.
No, it'll be, it'll continue to go current, that's why.
The year will continue to change.
Yes, yes, we've already.
That's why I wanted to make sure.
We wanna make sure all the dates stay current.
Okay.
As we're right now.
This is what I'm trying to make sure I've straightened out. Sorry if it's confusing everybody's keister.
We read the road debt, but now that the, up to current yearly standard.
It's under the application process.
I think it is. It's the same year, it's gotta be updated, uh, get the dollar back. I remember all the.
I think what my problem, or my problem, what my question area is, is we've got two times tip height on this section.
This is all been taken off.
Well, that's why I have those when you don't have.
See how this is all flying through?
Yeah, but this is dumb.
Okay.
It's not mine.
Okay, which one is that?
Number two.
Ours will be.
Number two that lasts.
There it is.
And then.
Yes, there is a discrepancy either because that two times, because one and a half is participating. I see what you're talking about.
I saw that other.
One, one, did you stop borrowing out, it was on number fifteen, which is page twelve?
Environmental impact assessment.
No, 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 down to article three, yeah, under environmental impact assessment, but down to article three, number two. Wind energy systems shall be setback no less than two times, which it should be one and a half times within participating. So it's a discrepancy. Article twelve, number page, number page, number two.
Article three.
I don't have, I don't have that covered.
Yours is gonna be on separate pages because we all have different.
Yeah, yeah, it would be on your, be your partner.
I don't know why you don't have the same draft.
That's a good.
That is terrible.
Why, I was hoping for a.
Now, I emailed one in December.
I understand that, and I was like, I said, I was at the time.
So are you looking at, does she have the section still that was applying to the single whip?
No, 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 it's below that, article three. Section three oh sixteen, township, Sonya, this will regulate the wind energy system shall be. And then number two, you've got the first section with one and then two, on on two, it said a wind energy system shall be setback no less than, and it's got two tines and there were, it should have been one and a half. Uh, the height of the maximum height of any portion of the whole structure from any property line or other wind energy system.
Can I see, see yours?
Right there, bottom of page.
Okay, this part, we didn't change at all.
Right.
Well, we did, but this isn't in the draft that we have currently because this is pertaining to the single whips. And it's in a different section, so it's not on this draft, that is why. Because it's in a different section of the ordinance book altogether. Because it doesn't, it doesn't follow the special, no, I don't, because it doesn't fall, fall through the special.
Do you like the man?
So that's not, so it's, it's in a, it's a separate page, that is why, and I'm waiting for Kathy to get me the word document to make those changes because I've never received the word document to be able to make those changes on that page within the ordinance book. Because it's not part of this draft.
Do you have a copying machine here?
Um, they don't have the keys to get into it. This was on my list.
Okay, well, and if it is, the, the only discrepancy is the height, the, the times, the height. We should have, instead of.
And that's city, and that is, we've already, like, except we'd already made those changes, you guys just don't have a copy of it because we don't, I don't have a copy of it from Kathy yet.
Right.
Because I've asked her for the word document of it and all I got from Shirley, and this is when the transition happened, was the front part of the ordinance book, which was just the, um, syllabus of it. I mean, there was no, I couldn't change anything and she was still trying to find it.
What's that?
It's like the motion that for our meeting in March. I know we wanted to wait till Sam was in, but let's have a current copy sent to all of us so we're all working off the same copy in March.
Oh, we did, we, that was sent in December.
In December, it doesn't have the changes that we made last month on.
Right, but there's no sense of making changes while we're still going over it, you know? And we're writing, you're writing them in as you go. There's no sense of sending it off and having the lawyer mess with it if we can get something figured out and stolen that we wanna have done.
Alright. I'm just trying to.
I would do think that we need to download the latest edition of the draft.
Yeah.
I didn't think it'd change since October, but I guess it has.
Very little.
So it's basically, your, your, your big deal was to get that two times the height to the right height, which for participating, it's one and a half. For not participating, it's three times.
Okay.
Okay? Article three. Page thirteen.
That's still all.
That's still all out there, yeah, yeah, so we're gonna have to skip that until we get in.
Because that's no, that's not a special landing instrument, we have to add accessory use.
Okay, so then we go down to article six.
That was my question, it was crossed out in my notes, but I didn't know why, I wanted someone to explain it, so, okay, that works, alright.
Um.
Article six. Um.
The repeal?
Yeah. I don't understand this. All ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict here with our repeal, or hereby repeal.
That's just legal ease saying if there was something else in our ordinance book that pertained to industrial wind, that this supersedes it, this goes over top of it.
Okay, thank you. Alright, the last one was physical appearance. I have a suggestion.
You can't have a purple one.
I'm not gonna ask for a purple one. Physical appearance, we're supposed to have them painted and warning signs and display of information and everything. So they look nice, so here's my idea. Let's paint them to correspond to the field they're placed in, it could be the same thing. Corn painted on the ones of cornfields, potatoes on potato fields, peas, apples, soybeans, and cheese. They certainly'd be more fun to look at, maybe bring in some traffic to help the businesses. Or consider painting them all in a real tree.
Or?
I just had to be.
Or don't have them at all.
I'm not serious, I just had to make it.
Actually, I won't help their.
Paint them transparent.
One of the famous drains.
Invisible paint.
Okay, everybody's, um.
We could, and then we think we entered in our price.
There you go. Um, thank you for listening to me and putting up with my questions, but somebody told me there were no stupid questions, so. Um, but thank you very much, put those things up.
Okay, so we've got through that, anybody else?
No, I lost Andy's on it.
Right here.
I don't have anything else.
I will let Andy catch up.
Oh, okay, I'm, okay.
All good. Everything is going around the table, can you give me three minutes of?
Yeah, I had a suggestion on where it says shall be repaired by the applicant, shouldn't that say will be and immediately repaired by the applicant due to the road?
I, I guess we can't put that in there because that's all done through the, the county, you know, the county road commission.
But basically what I'm saying is, that, that gives them too much wiggle room to, it could be a year, two years, five years, whenever they get around to it.
That's what they're running into.
I understand that they're, they're monitoring the roads because nobody coming in is going to pay for damage that's already there. So they want an assessment of the road, but when they tear it up, you can't wait three years to repair the road. A lot of these bridges and stuff on a lot of these roads around here ain't gonna take that kind of weight.
Well, I mean, I'd love to put something in there, I just don't think they're going to.
When zoning, the definition of shall, if it says shall, you have to do it, that is it, no ifs, ands, or buts, but it said, if you put sure to will be, that's.
That's totally.
But there's no timeframe, no time limit of when they're gonna repair them.
So they should, yeah.
They could be moved down to the next project and they could still be sitting there all tore up.
Maybe that'll be a good one to bring up to the county. And ultimately, they're gonna have the control over that, so they're.
I mean, you know as well as I do, a lot of these smaller dirt roads, them culverts ain't made to hold up that kind of weight.
I, I have a feeling.
I mean, you see how bad the milk trucks are tearing up standing, and that's supposed to be class A.
Have you looked at other ordinances to see what that language reads? Because I'm pretty sure Pine has a draft and it gives a specified timeframe.
Okay.
Because I know Isabella, they're, they're still fighting to get their roads there.
It's on the Pine country website, the draft.
We're saying, we put a time limit and the board says we can't do that, so.
It's your ordinance.
Well, and I, I don't know whether it would hurt me to, because like I said, whether it be to a host or to a colleague you said, I think I heard it checked.
I don't know if that should be part of the application.
Yeah, I think there is something there.
Yeah, criteria on your application to be approved whether you agree to a certain timeframe of repair.
I will check into that for you.
It was just a suggestion.
Yep, and it's under, it's understandable, we all know a lot of roads are on here. It's really easy to test cars, I test cars every day, it's rough and rambly. We've got some of the best roads out there for it. Anybody else? Who's that?
Isn't this, isn't this the last month of our ordinance for the moratorium?
I believe it is.
So are you presenting this to the board on Monday?
I don't think.
Or up to Monday?
No, because we still haven't found anything on the sound, so the ordinance is not ready.
I know, but if it's the last month of the moratorium, can you continue doing it without the board's approval?
Yep, so we'll just go with the board, let them know that we still haven't gotten it done yet and, uh, we'll go from there, see what they have to say.
I just thought maybe just take the board the way it was and call this is how you want it. So wasting more money.
That it?
Yeah.
Okay, same here. Anybody else?
Yeah, Roger, last, last meeting, I heard you say something, you was talking to Roger Button about extending Cannonsville Road, you said, you replied was you was working on it?
What?
You said you was working on it, a road?
No.
Yeah, you did say that.
I didn't.
You said you was working on it. It's on tape, you said you was working on it.
I said that I would pass it on to the board.
Well, you said you was working on it. It's on tape, so how is it, does anybody else, anybody else in the room know about the road other than you and Roger Button or what? No answer?
I told you.
Yeah, yeah, but we, we heard what you said too, so could you elaborate on that, is there?
Like I said, I didn't say that.
You did say that.
I didn't.
Tape out. Uh, also, we're having a wind, wind rally at Maple Drift School here Saturday. You said, last meeting, you said you was willing to be fair, or, or yeah, be fair, and I just wondered if you would personally attend this meeting?
I'd fine, Anna.
I, I'm talking to Roger, yes, I get it, I'm glad, um, if Roger would attend, Roger, you've attended, uh, Apex meeting at, uh, Newell Farms, so I just wondered if you'd wanna be fair on this.
Well, we'll see.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Kevin Murphy, Woodfield Township. You guys met on your last meeting and you voted on things and everything was cool, the sound ran and everything was good. Then at the board meeting, you requested that, it's like you rescinded what you guys voted on, so.
That's because I found new information out.
Did you just?
That's why I said, I was gonna bring it back to the memberships or the members of the planning commission who went with the new information that I found. And I did, I sent it out to everyone on the planning commission. And I did, I sent it out to everyone on the planning commission. And that was what I was trying to get at, when, uh, Ann had said something that she had heard about, about Robert Rand and, uh, Kevin Martin's, so that's, she was, she questioned, that's what she voted down. And then I found out this other information, so then I sent it to the rest of the planning commission members. Uh, and that's why I talked to John before the meeting to see what I should do about it.
You're dealing with pretty big guns when you don't have the trust in a company that's very reputable, that can prove it. I'm just, you're probably gonna be shocked at what could happen, why you did that. I just thought you should probably be aware of that, if you haven't thought about it already, it's gonna haunt you a little bit. Thank you.
Are your noise companies, are they, um, all certified? Brand certified and the other one that you guys are looking at, everybody's certified and all the?
Yes.
Okay. Where is she and where is she from? Excuse me, Kelly Jefferson, Douglas, thank you.
Anybody else?
Jamie Snyder, Cato Township, um, just coming from another township, I know we have other townships here. Have you guys thought about maybe everybody going together and having like a meeting with Robert Rand and the other guy? Splitting the cost, getting all the townships involved in that portion because sound is one that all of them really need to get informed on, so those who haven't had any information on sound, maybe everybody gets together, we rent the school and Cato, Douglas, all these townships that haven't, we combined cost, set up one date, and do it all together.
It's gonna be a public meeting anyways.
Yeah, but I have a meeting the same day, I wouldn't be able to attend. I'm just trying to, you know, cut costs for everybody, get everybody involved in it. It would just be, it's the same, it'd be your same two people. Just do it all in one night, invite everybody from different townships, you know, cut the cost between anybody that wants to. That way everybody gets involved in it, it's just a suggestion.
Nebia Township Board decides to unfold.
Okay. I know, it was just a suggestion.
We can bring it up, we got a meeting in.
Yeah, it's the same day as mine.
It would be a good idea.
Thank you, Jamie.